There's a place you can come to when you want to fuel your group's passion for business. A place where the sea kisses the coast and the sun warms the spirit. A place where ideas take flight and senses are heightened. Now picture your next meeting in Newport Beach. Picture perfect. Newport Beach, one of the premier destinations in the world. Getaway to the stars? Home to an eclectic and energetic community bustling with the spirit and vitality that greets visitors in a most unique way. Recently, each of the six full-service hotel properties in Newport Beach has undergone extensive renovations and significant improvements, infusing the city with a fresh new glow. With more than $125 million invested, the city's commitment to improving the experience for each business visitor and meeting attendee is clear. Newport Beach's established brands of excellence include Marriott Bayview, Marriott Hotel and Spa, Hyatt Regency, Fairmont, and Radisson, as well as unique properties such as the iconic Balboa Bay Club and Resort and Newport June's Waterfront Resort and Marina. Picture your next meeting in Newport Beach. Picture perfect.
Just to make it clear, since people probably do know there is pending litigation by Manfred against the commissioners, we did everything we could to make clear to them that this was purely for people to be here for the candidacy. We would not talk at all about that. We can't talk about it. And so, along those same lines, there will be no questions to anybody about that litigation, okay? I'm sure everybody's fine with that because it's not the issues that we're facing here in the county, so, well, whatever. Okay, so the way we're going to proceed is by asking each of the candidates here for an opening statement, which is going to answer the question that I can see is that. Who are you running against? And why did you decide to run? If each of you could take two minutes just to give us that introductory information about yourselves. And we can start with whomever wants to start on that one.
First of all, I'm Eric Green, and I run against Chris Day. We chose to run for this position with a lot of encouragement from a lot of citizens in Preble County. Having served on the school board of National Trail in my second term, president of the board and former councilman from New Paris, a lot of people had liked a lot of our ideas, our positiveness and our openness to pursue new ideas and trying to bring whatever role we've served in to light and bring positive direction in any capacity we've served in. So with a lot of encouragement from a lot of individuals is why we're here this evening. We feel that Preble County deserves a choice from the past direction of either commission board that has been involved with some good ideas in place, just with some disagreements along the way. So that is why we're here this evening. Thank you.
Well, I'm Denise Robertson. And I decided to run a few years ago. I kind of woke up and realized that our country was in a mess. And I started looking around and decided that in our own backyard, we had a few things that needed to be cleaned up. And I started going to the commissioner meetings and arguing with them about the Goose Creek Crossing project. And they were listening. And when your elected official stopped listening to you, it's time to replace them. So I had, you know, I'd been active, you know, talking to them, arguing with them, presenting our case, you know, to them. And it wasn't good enough. It wasn't enough, so I decided to run for county commissioner. I think I have a lot of skills in my career. I've built a lot of skills in my career that I think I can bring to the table. And I am ready to serve.
Thanks Denise. Jane.
I'm Jane Marshall, and I'm running against Denise Robertson. I selected that seat because there would be nobody run. It would be a single candidate in the general election regardless of who won. And I wasn't willing to allow that to happen. So that's why I chose that seat. I'm running for commissioner this time for a couple reasons. I served this commissioner four years ago, for four years. And I just didn't feel like I was done with the job that God had given me to do. So that's why I chose to run. The second reason is I don't do frustrated well. And I have been extremely frustrated over the last four years. The commissioners, they don't listen to people. And on the back of this is the org chart, organizational chart for Preble County. And it's color-coded, and you'll have to trust me. I can show you it afterward. At the top of it, in the orange, are the citizens of Preble County. And all of these people are elected officials, the blue and the yellow. The yellow are the county commissioners. They're not charged much when it comes to people. And they need to be working with the other elected officials. And they need to be serving the people of Preble County. Because people, people in general are here to serve God, serve people, and they're last on the list. And it's time that we have some commissioners that don't think of themselves first. And that's why I'm running.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got questions from the audience. I will ask them, and then if they're directed to a particular candidate, I'll let you know that. I think most of them look like they're for everyone. You will have a minute and a half to answer the questions. So start. Let me go first. He's my timer, okay?
And if you have any more questions, please write them down. This is your opportunity. Let me know. Raise your hand, and I'll pick them up from you.
We'll take them as long as they come, you know? Like us people answer questions, it may raise a question for you, so feel free. But there's one that was submitted that's very helpful, I think, if people are not completely familiar with this whole race. And it is, "For people that don't know just what a commissioner job is, please explain the job description in some detail as much as possible. Thank you." That is for everyone. So let's start this way, and then we'll go, I don't know, back and forth.
Commissioner's job is basically a three-person board that is CEOs of the county. They're responsible for the expense side of all the budgeting. They don't figure out how much money's coming in. That's the job of the auditor. But they are in charge of setting the expense budgets for all the departments in the county. From the engineer to JFS to the dog warden to the other elected officials. Now, they don't do that without a significant amount of input. But there's another piece of the puzzle that you need to understand, and that is the general fund. That's what you hear about. That's what, at this point in time, has three and a half million dollars plus of cash. That's what supplies the revenue to run the jail and the sheriff's office and Jeannie Dudas's office and all the rest of, Jeannie Creach's office, excuse me, and all the rest of the offices that are run by the general fund. The other thing that they do that's pretty significant is that they have to approve all the contracts within the county. Are we going to know when we're about done? Because I could talk for a long time. You'll just give us the high sign or something? Okay, I'll let somebody else continue.
Well, Jane, she explained it very well. Having been a former commissioner, she knows exactly every in and out of that capacity. Or Denise and I both were newcomers to that onset, but having been an elected official, the budgeting is a lot of what Jane alluded to. They oversee the monies coming in and dole out to the departments. They also oversee the zoning and planning of various areas in the county to how the county will grow. And that's one thing I'm sure we'll get on topic tonight, is economic development when we get to that point. But also, it is a representative government for the people and by the people. And that's something I think we can rectify with all three of us standing here. I think we're all in agreement on that, that a lackluster voice for the people has been lost. So turn it over to Denise.
Okay, well, that was, they answered the question, so. The, I mean, we're in charge of budget. I mean, we have all the departments in the county. We allot their money to them. When it comes time for, if anything happens, where we have to make cuts, we would be the ones responsible to make cuts. For some miracle, we get an influx of money. We'd be the ones to dole that out. I know with the local government fund, we are responsible for making sure that that is split fair and equitably to all of the townships and to the villages, so.
Thank you. This one, I'm trying to make these kind of segue into where we go, but this one is a little like the bit that says, "The commissioner's job is to provide services. That costs money. That cost will increase." That's a fact. "The commissioners have two sources of money: taxes and service charges. All candidates say they will not increase taxes. No candidates mention increasing service charges. All candidates say they would increase efficiency." That really doesn't bring in money. It gives you more bang than buck. But specifically, what efficiencies would you put into effect? Is the question clear? Clear enough? We'll start with Denise.
Okay, efficiencies. Well, I consider fees, taxes, any of that stuff taxes. So anytime there's a fee, that's still a tax. That's money that comes out of your pocket. And I truly do wish to not raise any fees or taxes. I will be taking a pay cut myself before I would do that. So efficiencies, given that I'm a systems analyst, I'm hoping, one thing I've found just since campaigning is a lot of our information is not online. That would be a tremendous help to the community, transparency, to provide a lot of our information online, so you can get it through the computer at home. You don't have to show up and ask for a public records request, although that's even pretty easy, too. I don't, I'm not familiar with the, all the departments and who's who and what's what and who needs to be, you know, I won't say cut, but one thing we do in the private sector is, we, they encourage, I've been in companies before that would encourage the people that are employed to find more efficiencies. And they would give a bonus to a person who could save the company money. And so in this case, it would be who could save the county money. I think that before you make any cuts to services or you increase any taxes, you need to make sure that you're running as efficiently and that your budget has, is as lean as it can be.
As far as efficiencies in that regard, my opponent is one of the champions, the only vote, matter of fact, for the permissive road tax. So if we're talking about fees and instances in Preble County is where we stand between my opponent and I, I do oppose that at this point. I think a firm and impartial assessment to what each department needs should be done first before you cut across the board. They have got the surplus that they have at this point by a lot of cuts in services over the past four years. I disagree with how they've arrived to get that figure when they turn around and spend on other projects. At least the public perception is there. Now whether that is done exactly in that manner, the perception is definitely there with taxing one hand or to put more assessment or fees on you and then to spend purposely in another. I would do a firm, fair assessment to make sure that all departments have the adequate funds that they need before we would ever implement any type of cuts to any services to Preble County. But we feel that some of the surplus that they have was done unfairly to a lot of citizens to our county for the services that they rely on. One is the county sheriff's department. Not that you would turn around and swell the department all the way up to the current level with that, but when they've cut detectives out, and that's the secondary line that goes out after a theft has happened, those areas in that department are very crucial that they expect that follow-up in that service. So we would definitely assess and make a good confident decision after talking with many, many departments and getting a better acquaintance with everyone. Like Denise, and I said, I'm meeting a lot of new faces as we go along as well. I don't know everybody either, but I am very fair and open-minded. I'm not in no preconceived judgment as to what needs to be cut or where I would cut until I do that fair assessment. Thank you.
The services that are provided by the county are very important. And as a lot of you in this room can attest to, they're bare bones. Jeannie, and I'm sorry I'm picking on you, but you're there and I can see you. She has herself and one person in her office. And she does all the recording of all the deeds and all the property transfers and a whole big list of things that I don't have any concept of how many it is. I mean, it's huge. Stop in there someday and ask her, and she can give you a whole big list. Her office, the money that she brings in, a lot of it, I believe, goes, it stays, some stays in the John Fund, some goes to state. But she, she brings in far more than she puts out. That I will guarantee you. When you look at somebody like the dog warden in the county animal shelter, not Humane Society, the goal there is for the dog tags to pay the bill for that. That's not a bad goal. You know, the goal for building and zoning is for the fees that come in to pay for those items, you know, the, all the advertising and everything. So those are fee for service. That's, I don't consider that a bad thing because that's charging the people who are using the service. So efficiencies, you know, you've heard bare bones. Preble County gives new meaning to the word bare bones. We're about naked bones, or the bones are falling apart, or there's no meat on the bones. When you have, at the sheriff's office, when you have one person taking care of all the 911 calls, what I want to know is how they go to the bathroom. I mean, that's, that's very, an eight-hour shift, I wouldn't want to sit there. And though I have to go to the bathroom and can't go, I mean, so sometimes you can't, you cut too much. And when you get to bare bones, there's two people in the treasures office. They bring in all the money in the county, and there's two people there. We have elected officials that actually work. Jeannie works. Brenda White works. They have no choice because nobody else to work. So that's.
Thank you. This is a specific question for Denise Robertson. What local boards have you served on, and what did you gain from that experience?
I have actually never served in a public, in a public office. So I do not, I don't have any experience with that.
I think the question means any kind of board. It could be a nonprofit or even a, whatever. It doesn't have to be government. I'm assuming that.
Yeah. I've spent, I mean, I've spent most of my adult life working and building my career and taking care of my family. And, I mean, I do, I do charity work. I mean, I will do 5Ks and raise money for charity and that kind of thing, but I've never actually served on a board.
Okay, thank you for your answer. Let's see, since I gave one to Denise, I'll give one that's only for Jane as well. We'll do one and one for a little bit here. Jane, what did you start in your first term that you feel the need to finish? You had stated in your opening, I think, that you were not finished.
Part of it, and a big part of it, is economic development. When I served, I was, to be tactful, they didn't pay much attention to me. They had their ideas, and they were bent that they were going to do things like Goose Creek. They were, and that kind of thing. And I suggested, why don't we get a, the fund where people can borrow money, and the name escapes me right now. But nevertheless, there's a way that revolving, yes, thank you, revolving loan funds. And I suggested in our meeting that we do that. And Hal Yoder at that time was in charge of OGDC. He thought it sounded like a decent idea. And when I left the room, they said, the other two said, "No, we don't think she needs to work on that." So I think there's, when you have three people working together on one issue and working cooperatively on one issue, things can get done a whole lot better. So that's, that's one of the things. The other thing that I really want to do is to continue to serve people. Because the last four years, people have not been served. They have not abided by this at the least.
Thank you. Eric, I promised you one, too, but there's not one here to, oh, yes, there is, one just for you. Ready? How does your political view differ from Chris Day?
I guess the biggest difference between my opponent and myself, and what Jane, I guess to touch a little bit on her and Denise, both, in any department or any group of elected officials, you want continuity between all three, or whatever body the number may be on there, of people working together. And I don't think that one political body over another should take priority in the county, meaning all Republicans, all Democrats, or all independents. We are all in there for the voice of the people. I look out here and see a lot of good people, Republicans, Democrats, and independents. Just average citizens that care about how Preble County should be coming up in the future. I think the stark difference between myself and my opponent is I'm very open-minded. I'm not one to be led by my nose by anybody, but that doesn't mean I'm going to be an obstructionist going into office either. I feel that the current slate of commissioners, we have all, an all-Republican board, which is not bad. I believe that your views in life, you ought to be able to stand steadfast on your core beliefs. And for an all-Republican board that is supposed to be, when I think Republican, you think conservative, they didn't always have to be Democrat, Republican, Independent, because I view myself as a very conservative individual. No Blue Dog Democrat, if you want to call me one. I have many conservative beliefs and endorse that way. I'm endorsed by Citizens for Community Values, which stands up for faith, family, and freedom. So I feel with my background, my beliefs, I will definitely stand steadfast on my core beliefs. My Christian background, I'm a Baptist by faith, and will be very open-minded to how we will move Preble County forward through a collaboration of many efforts. Not just because the Republican Party wants it this way, or the Democrat Party, or Caucus of Libertarian, or what have you wants it this way. I will be in there working for all Preble counties. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, here comes Goose Creek, of course. This is for all candidates. "If Goose Creek is no longer a priority of the county, why would the county continue to list on its website, and I'm quoting, 'the intersection of 127 and I-70,' end quote, as a priority for economic development?" That's the first part of the question. Why is it still listed that way on the county website? And then, "As a commissioner, would you allow this to continue?"
No. No. As a matter of fact, as a private citizen, I may actually say something to them. I realize, I like the idea that there's a list, a concentrated list of all of our available properties in the county. A lot of, a lot of counties are doing this. The state's doing it. I think the website actually is run by the state. And I like that. I like that there's one shop, want to stop shopping for somebody who's looking to develop somewhere. But Goose Creek is not, we don't own it. We don't, I mean, I guess it's still for sale. I guess the kids still have it for sale. It's not up to us to market it. I would not, I would not let it continue. Especially because I do believe it says 200 acres. I mean, it's, it's the whole entire shebang. And that's not, that seems kind of deceptive to me, actually.
Well, I have to give a big no as well. I agree with Denise on that wholeheartedly. It's preconceived that we're doing a disjustice or disservice to other business areas in Preble County that actually want to develop. Working with municipalities should be a priority and a goal for any commission candidate that goes into this. We've had four years of the current group of commissioners and a lot of lip service of working with municipalities. And I intend to restore that part with a good working relationship with all municipalities.
Absolutely. It should be taken off the website. There's no, there's no, there's no reason that it should, we should have a webpage, which the county does specifically for Goose Creek. That's, it should be gone. I think that should put in, in each one of your minds, is it really gone? And I think that you need to think about when you, you know, is the vote on casting, is it going to ensure that it's gone? Because it does need to be gone. That's, that's a field of dreams, to say the least. The thing that, I think we got the cart before the horse at Goose Creek. Because they want to, they want to put infrastructure in. Okay, that's a fine idea if it was close, let's say it's close to Eden. But what, are we going to have any incentives for the business to come in? You know, we have empty buildings all over this county. And I believe that south of town, the building, the Miranda Homes building, there's a realtor working with somebody who wants to consolidate in this county. They have half their business here, and they have half of it in Chicago. And all they would offer them was a Chamber of Commerce membership free. And I appreciate the chamber, I really do, but we need a little bit more, we need to have some kind of a comprehensive list of what can we do to attract business? If we want to be in the attracting business mode, let's have a comprehensive list of what can we do to attract business. And that's what's missing at a place like Goose Creek. You know, were we going to give the land away? There is, there is a lot of where we want us up there, and they were never into.
Okay, let's start here again, just so we keep getting fresh voices. This question is, "Is there a strategic plan for Preble County?" That's the first part of the question.
Well, if there is, I'm not familiar with it. I know that there, as far as Goose Creek, there was no, no plan. There's a lot, awful lot of unanswered questions. No, I don't, I'm not familiar. If there is, I don't know what it is, and if there is one, I will be studying up on it quickly.
Hold on. "Would you support spending our tax dollars to have one done?"
A strategic plan?
Yes.
That would depend on how much tax dollar, tax dollar you're talking about, how much input the commissioners would have, and how much input the people of the county would have. It would, it would really depend on how much you're talking. Consultants are expendable, so it would depend on how much it costs.
To my knowledge, there is no plan. If there was, we wouldn't be in some of the best we are. If we had one, they'd better go back and revisit that plan and look at what they did. Because red flags should have been flown somewhere when we spent, cost $800,000 on ground we don't own. That's very problematic. I think every taxpayer in this county ought to be livid for the dollars spent on Goose Creek. I think the concept is noble. There's nothing wrong with trying to promote and stand behind business in Preble County, but that should be done through private enterprise, not on the backs of taxpayers. And each one of those individuals in that office ought to be held accountable for it. As I said earlier, it shouldn't matter whether you're Democrat, Republican, Independent. As taxpayers, we need to stand together for strong values that we instill and the high accountability for every elected official. When you go into that office, people expect you to do a job and be very mindful of their money. And that's something that I will definitely do. I don't like to see dollars squandered and wasted away because we have limited resources in this county. It's no surprise. We need to come to the reality of that and get that strategic plan in place. I would support dollars spent on a, an assessment or a group to come in and help with the county commission. But I'd like to see the dollars and figures that they would actually chart before I'd say, "Yeah, we're going to spend this money."
The closest thing Preble County has to a strategic plan is the comprehensive land use plan that was done. I was trying to think of this. I was trying to think of this, when Tom McQuiston left commission, so 2000, about 2000, right, right before, maybe 1999, no, 2001, 2000. It was approved at that point. Now, the cool part about that plan, and that is, that is where do we think that we, as a county, want to develop? And that's in the unincorporated areas. Because Preble County, I want to give you a little bit of a lesson. Preble County has total county zoning. And that is unheard of. Roland Winberg's from Montgomery County in the back, and I think he'll attest that they have township zoning over there. So they have, each one of their townships have their own zoning, and then the county has a planning board. Well, the county here has total countywide zoning. So this plan was designed to say, okay, for, and for the most part, where do you see development occurring in the next 10 years? That plan needs to be updated. I, I don't know that I would call it a strategic plan, but at least it's about land and where you want the development to be.
Okay, this is for each candidate. How would you improve employment in Preble County? Actually, Eric, why don't you go first, so we can shift it around every time. Denise always has to go first.
Well, I'll tell you what, that's a huge issue, not only here in Preble County, but across the nation. And I think if you look at Barack Obama and Mitt Romney, they've got a lot of plans out there too. But bottom line is, government does not create business, no matter how much both sides want to talk different things of their plans, but entrepreneurs do. As a small business owner myself, I think we've got a lot of areas that have been in this county through our Economic Development Office. When they throw out figures of 1085 an hour times 10 employees, that's a lot of money. That's, that is small business when you look at some medium-sized companies in the area. But an average person just starting out, that's a huge dollar impact. I would try to work very well with our Economic Development Office to shape that into something that will grow and start a business recruitment program in Preble County. Because ultimately, with a small rural county like we have, you want jobs and things that fit the niche of Preble County. So a business recruitment plan is what I would throw out there, involved with our overall strategic plan. Going back on the other area, the planning, they do have a plan. It is through the zoning board, and it states in there something about the fact of developing around existing infrastructure because of cost factors and that. They, they didn't look at that, they went goofy on the idea of just going up there on Goose Creek. So development, economic development should be tied in with that recruitment plan because there could be a lot of things happening out of that. But working with local municipalities to collaborate, something tangible that will fit the needs of Preble County is where I would be moving towards.
I think that it's very important for us as commissioners or even people, we need to look at the successful businesses in the county. Because that's where most of your job creation comes from, is expansion of small business. And I think that we need to have a roundtable on a regular basis with our, the CEOs of these businesses. Because they can tell us, but they're the experts, I'm not the expert. None of, none of the people up here are the experts about how to start business. And government doesn't do that stuff officially. And we need to learn from the experts how best to serve their needs. And so that, that would be one of my first things, is to set up some meetings with these people. And hopefully, I could get them in the same room. If not, I'll go visit them in their offices. But I think that's the important thing. Because, you know, if you look, there's, we've had a lot of entrepreneurs that have started something from nothing. That's how Henny Penny got started, that's how Bowlin got started, and then that spun off two businesses, Bowlin and Silfex. So, you know, we've, and then you've got little, smaller things like Eaton Medical Transport, and Eaton Computer, and Eaton Compressor. Those started from nothing. Absolutely not, I mean, just somebody thought a few dollars and probably a garage. So we need to look to them, because they know what they need. I can't tell them what they need.
I had a small business owner telling me, so this campaigning, get the government out of my pocket. She, she had, she told me all of the fees and all of the taxes that she pays. And I just imagine it was a, it was a big amount. It was a very large amount. Just imagine if we could put that kind of money, instead of taking it as the government, leave it in the hands of the entrepreneur. I think we need to, to try to lower our taxes, try to lower our regulations, check, you know, look at what we have as regulations, at what's stopping people from coming here? What, what could be, what, you know, zoning regulations are that are antiquated we can look at? Or what, you know, let's, let's talk to them, like Jane said, let's go and, and talk to them. But we need to get out of the way. Government is in the way of, of this, of the prosperity of the people we are trying to create jobs.
Staying on the subject, basically, of economic development for the county, here's a question for each of you. What has been the value of our current Economic Development Department? Also, what changes would you see to make this department of more value to the county? Anybody who wants to jump, can jump this time.
I think our, the, it's not very valuable to me. The Economic Development Office, I think, is, I think the original thought of having the private partnership with the government is a good idea. Because, you know, I, I just, I think that's, that's how, if you go back to O G D C, that's how it was started. And we had the government side and never got to the public side, or the private side, excuse me. And this time, we have them both. But I think the county has shanghai'd the economic development system. I think that the Economic Development Director should answer only to the Development Partnership Board. Because I think that's, that is how I first heard about it. It made sense to me. Because going back to my previous comments, they know how to get the jobs done. And they know what they need. I don't know what they need, they know what they need. The Board of County Commissioners, I now don't know what they need. But I think that office needs to answer only and solely to the Development Partnership. Now, the commissioners have a seat on the board, the city of Eaton has a seat on the board, and that's how they're in, could, could be done. But they shouldn't be having weekly meetings or monthly meetings with commissioners to, you know, to, to get their marching orders, so to speak.
Well, as I said before, I would do a definitely a fair assessment before I would be preconceived as far as which way we would go with the Economic Development Office. I do think there needs to be a lot of tweaking in there if we're going to keep this office, make it fit the needs of Preble County, whether it be working directly with the Economic Development Partnership through the Chamber. I am a firm believer that not necessarily the county commissioners always have to be the ones out front. I look at my own assessment, just from the outside looking in. I think when, in the beginning, how Goose Creek started, the ideas and concept of that, I think they had somewhat of the right mindset going forward with things. But then, once the commissioners started jumping out in front and trying to take a lot of power grabs that was perceived that way, things got messed up. I think private enterprise, behind-the-scenes, elements to make things happen without the commission being in front, I think would be a huge asset in Preble County. Let private enterprise drive those, those areas.
I personally know three different businesses that have been created in the last year without any help from the government, here in Preble County. I don't know, I, I don't, I'm not impressed with our economic development program. I, I'm not sure we're getting our return on investment. I, I'm also not quick to cut things and, and, you know, blindly, you know, I would evaluate and prioritize. One thing that bothered me was that the shares, the shares department was cut at the same time that this department was being created. And to me, shares department is priority over somewhat filling, creating that department, especially in the direction that they went in pursuing Goose Creek. One thing that bothers me too is that seems like we've been told that the economic department, Economic Development Director, that he's been working with all of the entities, and that's just, I've been told that that's not true. I've been out visiting to all the township meetings, and all the village council meetings, and some of them haven't seen the hair of our economic director. So I, I'm not sure we're getting our return on investment, and that is something I would evaluate as commissioner.
Thank you all. Jane, here's a question for you, since we're not quite finished with Goose Creek. Please explain your actions when you were commissioner concerning Goose Creek.
Okay. Before I took office, and I took office January, about January 1, 2005. In December of 2004, the Board of County Commissioners approved a contract with Pazuti. And that was, at that time, that was the group that was working on developing Goose Creek. And at that time, it was 20, almost 2,200 acres. It went from Orphan's Road to 40, down to Monroe Central, over to almost Ozias, if you drove straight line north. I thought that was way too big. Nobody paid much attention, but I thought it was too big. And we applied for a grant in 2006. It was one JRS grant, Job Ready Sites Grant, first came up. And it was for $5 million. We applied for it, I voted for it. It, we were, Goose Creek was a fairly new thing. Let's put our toe in the water and see what happens. So that's what I did. That same year, in the fall, when I saw O G D C, which is Ohio Gateway Development Council, which was the first economic development office we had, we were paying them $35,000 a year. In 2006, I believe, I voted not to do it. And if it wasn't 2006, it was certainly 2007. City of Eaton also cut their funding about that same time because nobody saw any return on investment of that money. So, and after that, I just, you know, I didn't vote for, there really wasn't much to vote on about Goose Creek, because there wasn't much done. We did, at the contract with Pazuti, they helped to take care of the, they helped with the JRS grant and did a website, things like that. But that was the only, the public funds that we expended was $50,000. And that was encumbered before I ever took office.
All right, let's shift gears, but stay controversial. What should be done about the Leachate Line, the Locking Green? Will you support it going to Camden? This is not really a fair question, because a judge is going to decide this ultimately. But if you were the judge, say, I'm adding to this woman's question, what, would you do about this issue?
Well, I, I would support going there. If you look at how the past decision was from previous boards of the county commission, it was actually supposed to go there in an initial agreement with them. The other is the scoring factor. It appears to me it was changed, set up by Mr. Day and the current Board of Commissioners to try to fare things up from what a previous board had done. And then it appeared that rules were changed, and it would still come out scoring higher towards Camden. Still bids was, was given, and I believe Camden had a, had a lower bid process than that. But ultimately, the judge would decide, but I would. If it was done, could go back from the beginning, rightfully so, it probably should go to Camden. So both sides, I've got nothing in it one way or the other. I think fair, fairness should always come into play. It shouldn't matter which side or the other, nor should the deck, the deck ever be stacked towards one village entity or a private group, just like Locking Green. It should be a fair group. And if you are going to have a commission set up to help score these processes, they shouldn't have members of that board or the other. It should be an independent group scoring those things to be done in a fair and upright manner.
I looked at the economic, the scoring system, and on that, the more favorable economic outcome would have gone to Camden. So as the judge, I would definitely award Camden the whatever they're asking for. I'm not sure, I think they're actually asking for them to do it over and send it to Camden. So I would do that. Because economically, taking that down 127 made more sense than to take it in back road through, you know, the country into Locking Green. And so it makes sense that it should have gone to Camden.
You know, we've talked a lot about economic development. And when you have a conversation about Goose Creek, I about Camden, it's hard for me not to talk about the Leachate Line. Because the day they approved that contract, they had people in fur this, from the state talking about Goose Creek crossing. And one of their questions were, is it close to rail? Well, no, it's not close to rail, but my gosh, north of Camden is right next to rail. So I think for them, for the county commissioners and the Republican county commissioners to talk about and be so supportive of Goose Creek, yet let that little Leachate Line go a mile farther across little country roads, so, there's some big disconnect. And my, my personal theory is, they sent it to, to Locking Green because if they sent it to Camden, every JRS grant Camden would have got. I'd bet money they would have gotten, or that they would have applied for, they would have gotten. Because it's next to the highway, it's easy access to 70, it's next to the railroad, it has sewer, and then it would have sewer running right by it, and then water would be adjacent in Camden. That's where development should occur, is around existing development where services can be provided. So for them to vote in the afternoon, send it to Locking Green, when they were talking about Goose Creek in the morning, I, I don't know. You talk about compartmentalizing, they were really doing a good job that.
All right. That leads me to a question that was for Jane, based on your opening statement too, if I can find it here. I actually don't remember, I don't see it, but it was, oh, here it is. In your opening statement, you said that your first four years had left you frustrated. We can't tell. What was it about the job that frustrated you most?
Not the first four years, it's the four years between the time I served, sorry if I wasn't clear, between the time I served and now. Because, you know, things were, there was not a lot of dissension between the county commissioners and the citizens. It was a fairly calm, you know, if you go back before I was commissioner, there was a lot of dissension. In fact, I've seen the Board of County Commissioners about the landfill lease. And then, once I got in office, things really seemed calmed down. That is why, in my opinion, that David Westler got reelected. And if I have one regret, it was that things calmed down enough for him to get reelected. So I, the four years I was there, the people and the county commissioners got along. Did all the county commissioners get along all the time? No. Were there two-to-one votes? Yeah. Who was the one vote? Me. So, and that sometimes is frustrating. But I'm here to serve the people. I'm not here to serve a party or my two fellow commissioners. So the four years since then, all the work that we did to try, to try to get people working together with Board of County Commissioners, that was kind of for naught. And now, nobody likes the Board of County Commissioners, including me. And I'm ready to get back to serving people and to helping everybody get along. You know, I, that's, that's the goal, that's my goal.
All right, let's expand that a little bit with this question for all three of you. How would you propose creating a plan for Preble County that would include the city governments, county, and Chamber of Commerce? If you envision that, I guess you could stay right up front, you don't envision that. But that's, I believe, the way the question was meant to be framed.
Can you repeat it?
Yes. How would you propose creating a plan for Preble County that would include the city governments, county, and Chamber of Commerce?
Well, I definitely like the idea of everyone working together. I've attended some of the township meetings where the township trustees come together as, as the county. I don't know that they have one that is for all the entities, which I think would be a great idea, because they're the closest to the people. And they, and I, their input's vital. And I would love to have some kind of, some kind of cooperation and some kind of group that would be the trustees and, and the councils and the Chamber of Commerce. I would, I would like that very much, and I would work toward that.
Let me stop you right there just for a minute to add my own question to make this a little clearer. Theoretically, at least, that is what the Preble County Development Partnership is. I mean, it's got township, it's got county, it's got the Chamber, everybody else. So I guess we're asking this question even with that already in existence. Like, what could we do to make that actually function to present a plan?
Um, I don't know, I mean, I don't know who all participates in that. I mean, I don't, I would encourage more participation. I'm sure we don't have 100% participation. So it would be maybe even go out and recruit some new businesses. So, it would be maybe even go out and recruit some new businesses and some new ideas because the fresh ideas are the solutions. You bring, the more fresh ideas and the more heads you can bring together is the more, and the more a solution is actually livable for everyone. So, maybe just encourage more participation.
You've got to take your fight with and in working with each township and municipality. Mr. Day stated back in our last meeting of candidates down at Fairgrounds that it's hard to get the message out there. Well, sometimes, people's not always going to come to you. And the different avenues and media outlets that's out there today, through Facebook, Twitter, what have you, different areas to encompass the new, new feelings and thoughts into it, you've got to take it to them. So, not necessarily during the day is always going to get your point across. You know, once a month, have a commissioner go out to one of the meetings. And you've got a board of three, you know, if you want good working continuity between, everybody take a turn, go out and hit some of these township meetings, municipal meetings through the, you know, New Paris or Camden, Lewisburg, West Alec. Splat it up, and get everybody working together. And we're all, we're all hopefully fighting for the same direction, and we want Preble County to succeed.
Earlier, I talked about the comprehensive land use plan, and that was done with a representative from every township, because now that was the unincorporated areas. So, every township and the county, and then there was a few from the planning and zoning and the border zoning appeals. So, that's how that plan was created. And I would envision, my only issue with the Development Partnership is that that's a pay-to-play thing. So, if I have my, I don't know, thirty-two-hundred, twenty-five-hundred dollars, some big amount of money, I can play. But if I don't, I can't play. So, I would suggest if we're going to do, if we're serious about doing a strategic plan with, and we need to include the townships in it, and we need to include all the entities that she described, the city, the townships, the villages, and the chamber, and then get everybody together and make, come up with what we want to do in our county, because this is our county. It's not the Board of County Commissioners' county, it's our county. And we need input from everybody out there. They need to be public meetings, and everybody can attend.
Where do you see Preble County in twenty years? It's like that really bad interview question. Where do you want to be in five years? But we're going twenty.
In twenty years, if we don't change the current path we're in, we're going to sit like we have for the past thirty with a lot of ideas floating around and still no action taken. I think Preble County needs modest growth, where we're going to sustain the figures the Chamber of Commerce had placed out there when it came to the decline in the working age for Preble County. Our demographics are changing, we're not the same people that were here thirty years ago. A lot of us are a lot older than we were, definitely thirty years ago, but we need to change how we do business here in Preble County. Not to reinvent the wheel, but to allow some modest growth to happen. And I think working with your local municipalities on areas that do want to develop and make their towns grow little by little without hurting our culture and way of life, I think would be a good option and plan moving forward for twenty years. You know, there's been a lot of ideas, there's, a lady had come up to me, the last one talking about a hospital. Now, I don't know that a hospital is the best one, but don't rule anything out. See what could work for Preble County. We're an aging society around here, maybe we, we key on a, you know, more in retirement areas, you know, through nursing homes and medical field. That's going to be a boom coming up early next year. So, different ways, we don't want to rule anything out. Keep all options on the table and see what's going to actually fit the needs of Preble County moving forward.
Well, this is a little tough for me, and I always get in trouble for going higher than county level. But with our current economic system in this country, I can't, I can't even imagine where we're going to be as a country twenty years from now, let alone as a county. Sixteen trillion dollars in debt, that's going to affect us somehow in a negative way. There's no way that you can, you know, be going broke and go to the mall as your solution. So, I, I actually, I don't, I don't know where we're going to be as a country. I, I can't even imagine, right now, I didn't imagine that we'd be sitting in this spot with the debt that we have and the, and the problems that we have as a country. So, I, I do not have an answer for that, I'm sorry.
Well, if I could look into a crystal ball, I think we will be, I think we'll still have agriculture. I think our towns will grow. And I think what a lot of people don't realize is that people like to move here because they like the rural atmosphere. You know, there's been, there's been different things I've worked on in zoning that I've realized that people move here because they like the rural atmosphere. So, I think if, and now if I could wave my magic wand instead of looking at the crystal ball, I think that we need to have our small businesses expand, and we need to sell ourselves because we have one of the best workforces in southwest Ohio. Because there's still a lot of people in this county that know how to work and know how to work hard. And I think that's one of the selling points when you're trying to, to get businesses to come in or businesses expand.
This is a question for Denise Robertson. What will your objective be and what will your main focus be? In other words, what do you plan to accomplish?
Well, I think there's a lot of trust that needs restored between the people and the government. And I'd like to see some more transparency. I know that Jeff Golden has suggested that we put the meetings on, online, YouTube videos. New parents did it, and they were getting ready to shut their lights out. So, it can't be that expensive. My, my goal is to try to foster relationships between the entities, the trustees and the villages, and get, try to get them working cooperatively. Sometimes that doesn't work so well. And I really would like to see our, our existing businesses grow and expand and find out what it is that's keeping them from growing and expanding and get out of the way. So, my goal will be to build relationships with the existing businesses and to help them, whatever, whatever it is that they need as far as less regulation or, or, you know, I don't know, lower fees, something, something has got to be the help to, for them to be able to expand and create more jobs.
Actually, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think that was a good question, I think all of us can answer, you know, at least what our vision or goals are going to be getting in there for elected as Commissioner. Mine is integrity. I think integrity has definitely been brought into question when you spend that type of tax dollars and the return on your investment just wasn't there. We need to have a government that is going to listen to how and what the concerns are of the public. Working with all the municipalities and collaborating, the different roles and ideas for each of us and how we're going to make Preble County a better place, I would love to be a part of that. It's not necessarily a, a I effort, but a we effort. And with all of us working together, we can make a lot of good things happen. That's something I've been very proud of as a councilman and in working on the Board of Education, and necessarily what I've done, but with a lot of good people working together, I don't necessarily have to be an out-front guy. But I'd love to be in a position to help put people in power that will help make Preble County a better place. And that's something I would be very adamant working for. What you see is what you get right here. I'm not going to turn around and sell the farm and then put us in debt on any more silly projects like Goose Creek. You're going to get a guy that's going to stand up there and listen to your concerns, make a good competent decision out of that, and hopefully the best interest of trying to help drive and improve Preble County to a better place for our future. The biggest portion of that that I failed to mention earlier was education. That's going to be a big plan going forward, having a member of the Board of Education, working with all of our local superintendents, keying up and partnering with the continued partnership with our Sinclair, working with Miami Valley CTC, partnering in even with IU East, other area colleges, community colleges in the area, how we can expand those. Having been on the Board of Education, we've put in efforts through Nashville Trail, the One-on-One Initiative. Every eighth grader through our seniors this year got a piece of technology placed in their hands with tablets. We're trying to help prepare them for future growth going in when they go off to college and then coming back for future jobs. That's something I've been very proud of, working with all members of our board up there to get that happening. We'd love to be able to work, help give futuristic ideas here in Preble County.
My objective is stated simply is to serve people. Whether it's one person that has an issue with foreclosure of a house, or whether it's a business that needs my input or, or my networking to help them create jobs or, or whatever it is, my, my goal is to serve people. That's, without that, there's not, there's nothing over there for me to do.
Just for a minute, let's get more specific about how we will increase the ability of the public to speak directly with any one of you as a Commissioner. Because all three of you have said that that's a huge issue, getting people to be able to speak to you. How are we going to do that, practically speaking?
Well, our congressional leaders, our state representatives, they have town hall meetings. We don't necessarily have to have the, the forming or the mindset of always having a meeting every Monday and Wednesday in the commission chambers. Like I said, take the fight out to the people. Get, you know, you've got to be involved, show them that you're down at their level. There is nobody in there better than any one of us here. We all put our pants on the same way regardless of what dollar signs we have behind each one of us. We've got to be able to show them, hey, we are put there by them, and we're going to be working for them. So, town hall meetings, if we've got to get out and go to each community, have certain ones a month, whether it's, so it's not, you know, take the, the formalities out of it, so it's not so, such a formal thing, so people can get up and just address us as a whole. Step up to the mic. It shouldn't matter what they ask, we're here listening to them. You've got to be able to take the heat, good or bad, one way or the other.
I would actually like to see at least one of our weekly meetings moved to the evening. Everybody works, I mean, some people work the second and third shifts, but most people work a first shift and cannot come to meetings. I actually had, we took, we have, we had a Constitution class, and Bob Stone cash summed up, signed up for it and showed up to two in the upper twelve, of course. And one of his, one of his comments were, do you know how many people showed up to the commission meeting today? And I went, no. He said, zero. And, and it struck, and I said, I was at work, Bob, I can't really take off work, it's not worth a vacation day for me to come and see you. So, so we need, we need to make it more accessible to people who are working full-time jobs. I mean, everybody is. I mean, you've got your retired people who can show up during the day, which is terrific. But you really need people being able to be accessible. I actually will be resigning my, my current job, and I'm very approachable. I'll give you my cell phone number, I don't care, you can call me anytime. So, but we do, we do need to be out and about and, and like Eric said, take it to the people if we have to. Go to the village meeting, they, they like it that I've been visiting with them.
When I served as Commissioner, I had office hours. I was told I was the first Commissioner that ever scheduled set office hours so that people could come in when I, when I was there, not, not during a regular meeting. People have my phone number, and I, to this day, get calls about complaints or concerns. And I direct them as best I can to who can help them. I think it's important, this communication, and that's basically what we're talking about, isn't just one-way, isn't them just coming to us, it's us getting out to them. And I think that one of the ways, like, has been discussed, Jeff Golden goes and buys CDs every week to put on the internet. He buys those. He shouldn't have to buy those. If he, if, if they don't want to put them up, they should give them to him. If, and even better yet, they should put them up. It's not that hard. I mean, I can even come close to getting something like that done. So, and I'm not techie. So, I think it's two-way communication. I think we need to pay attention to Facebook, we need to have our information on our websites so that people can access it. Because it's, if you only have one-way communication, it's no good. We need two-way communication.
All right, here's another needy question. You ready? In the majority of counties in Ohio, they employ a professional county administrator. How could this help, or if in your opinion, hinder the ability of the county to conduct prof, actually, I'm sorry, conduct professional day-to-day operations? Let me run through that. In the majority of counties in Ohio, they employ a professional county administrator. How could this help or hinder the ability of the county to conduct professional day-to-day operations? And let's start with Jane.
It would help immensely with one caveat, if you had three people as commissioners who were all willing to go into it open-minded. When I was Commissioner, we did not, we had a county administrator, and he finally left, thank you God. And then we got another county administrator that I honestly thought would be okay, and he left, thank you God. And after that, I, I wasn't willing to try again. And the rear was, is that county administrator was not a county administrator, it was a commission administrator, four, one, maybe two commissioners. But I'll tell you, it wasn't for me. You know, so I think if, the person needs to be somebody that can work with all three of the commissioners and that will actually do the job. The county commissioners need to be able to delegate. And the county commissioners that we've had in the past, they want their thumb on everything. Just like having weekly meetings or monthly meetings or whatever with Shonda Combs, that's having their thumb on her. We, I don't want her by thumb on her, or anybody else for that matter. But the administrator would be a valuable resource, given the right set of circumstances.
I would definitely entertain that, that thought right there as an administrator. I think it would, could be an asset to Preble County, but cost weighing all the benefits, good or bad, before we would give it a definite thumbs up all the way around. I think Preble County needs to change how we're currently doing things, assess how we handle areas in the, in the Commissioner's Office, how well we are working with all of our departments, and take the politics out of it and actually put the people first.
Well, I found it odd that we have an assistant county administrator and no actual county administrator, so I did find that weird when I went to talk to Connie. I would, I would entertain the idea of a county administrator if it was the right person. One thing that bothers me right now is that our landfill engineer is not a county resident. I'm almost positive that we could find valuable, competent people right here in the county to, to, you know, serve as our administrator. I, the, the picking process, I mean, it'd have to be somebody who's actually been successful at it because, I don't know, I, I would entertain the idea, given the right person and the right circumstances.
Thank you. Let's do this one. What separates yourself from your opponent? And Eric, we'll let you go first since you're.
He's here. Well. First of all, I know Mr. Day has some mitigating circumstances of why he's not here. But with that said, I was always talking to him very early, hey, you've got to show up if you want to make a difference. And as a Preble County Commissioner, I would definitely show up. I don't think you can go back and count on a handful of times that I missed a meeting as a councilman or as a member of the Board of Education. I take my role very seriously and stand up wholeheartedly for the people that I represent. The stark difference between Mr. Day and myself, he feels that Preble County is better off for what they've placed us or had done in the past four years, what he alluded to down there at the, the past meeting of candidates night. I completely disagree with him. They have taken a lot of elements into play by cutting across the board, even though they say they didn't feel arrive to a deficit and come up with a three-and-a-half million surplus without cutting on the backs of services of a lot of us taxpayers in Preble County. So, I applaud them for, yes, getting the, the books to where they are, and I don't want to see us go back to a deficit by any means. We are mandated to be fiscally responsible, but spending money on projects like Goose Creek, I believe, just blows that argument right out of the water. So, we will definitely restore integrity back to the office. I will listen to all people in Preble County. I'm not here to represent one political party over the other. I will work for all of us, plain and simple. Our message is very clear on that. We do not feel that placing a burden on any more of our taxpayers in this county needs to happen. We need to assess where we're at and live within our means, plain and simple. Thank you.
One thing that distinguishes, distinguishes me from Jane is that I do have a career in eighteen years, nineteen years in corporate America. I've worked in different, I'm assistant vainless, and I've worked in different industries, retail, wholesale, manufacturing, insurance. And I, so I, my training, my, my job is actually to, to solve problems every day. I have people coming to me constantly with big and small problems, and I have to learn how to, I know how to prioritize them. Sometimes I can help somebody with a small problem out, I can do it quickly and it not affect the big, you know, the big projects. But I need to know, I know how to prioritize the big projects, and I have a lot of them. But I need to know, I know how to prioritize the big projects, and I have a lot of them. So, I do have a background in corporate America.
I think simply said, it's experience. But if you go back to, in the early 90s, I organized a group in Preble County to oppose Montgomery County's landfill expansion that was going to be right on our border. There was not going to be any Preble County, any Montgomery County between that landfill and Preble County. That wasn't acceptable. There were people in Montgomery County that were working on the same issue, and we all worked together, and we succeeded. And there's no landfill on the western four townships of Montgomery County. And then fast forward into early 2000s, and I don't know why I get stuck with landfill issues, but we had a landfill lease that was coming up. So, our Commissioners decided they wanted to lease our landfill to Allied Waste, the second biggest waste hauler in the county in the country. And so, at that point, we organized another group, and we've got that stocked as well, with the help of a lot of people. And so, and then if you go to the little experiences of serving on the health board, and serving on the fair board, and going and being on zoning boards, I think it's the experience, because I know the systems. I know what, how things work in Preble County. And, you know, I am a problem solver. That's the first thing I try to do, is figure out, how do I fix this? And that's why I went back in the commission office.
Answer that back to Jane, because I'm going to segue into this. I have a feeling the answer has landfill in it. Why or how did you get started in politics?
Well, believe it or not, it wasn't landfill. It was, we live on a farm. We're very farmers, and I was raised on a hog farm in northern Preble County. Northeast, I should say, it's not northern Preble County. But anyway, they started, people started trying to build houses around our farms. And not just a house here and there, but subdivisions around our farms. That's not a good thing, in my opinion. And I started in, it started all with zoning. And that's where I first learned and heard and came up with, development should occur around existing development where services can be provided. At that point in my life, we were talking about multiple houses. Does it make sense to put five or six or 10 houses out on a little township road where there's no sewer and there's no water? And where there isn't much water under the ground, actually? And where there's lots of animals, and lots of smells, and lots of narrow roads that can't take any more traffic? I think the answer to that is no. Put the houses around the villages. That's where development makes more sense. So, that's how I got into it. Then I served on the mental health board, fair board first, then mental health board. And during fair boards, when I got involved in the landfill stuff, because I had friends that lived in western Montgomery County, that they were concerned they were going to lose their farm. That's their livelihood. I couldn't abide by that.
Same question.
Could you repeat again? I was listening to everything, and she was saying it.
I believe the question was, why or how did you get started in politics?
Well, I'll tell you what, at 19-years-old, I got elected to my first seat on the New Paris Council, and a lady by the name of Mary Jane Thomas, which was the mayor at the time, had approached me. We had some issues with some water concerns down there in New Paris, which at the time was France Lake Park. And we had lived there at the time, and a lot of residents, they had put meters in in New Paris, and we'd already paid that through our lock rate. Same thing, there was no voice for the people. So, I went around and talked to several residents there, and talked to the mayor. She said, "Eric, you're very well, your thought process is right on track, and I think you ought to go talk to the Board of Public Affairs." So, I was the representative for the people, the homeowners there in that mobile home park, to go forward and speak on their behalf. And then, lo and behold, that same fall, was a candidate for council and got elected to my first seat. So, that's kind of where I've gotten my start, and we've kept the same, I'm the same guy I was, I started out, but 19, I'm 32 right now. I'm very fair, open-minded, and would be honored if I would be able to serve as your next County Commissioner.
I'm not telling you how old you are. Older than Eric.
We all are.
I actually got started, I heard about the $876 billion stimulus program that our Congress passed to fix our debt problem. And my head almost exploded, because I don't know anybody who fixes their debt problem by going shopping and spending more. I don't know anybody that does that. So, I actually went to rally in Dayton, and came away from that knowing that I had to do something, do something. And so, I started the Preble County Liberty Group. And we started looking at issues. We liked to pick on Congress, we liked to pick on the President, we liked to pick on, you know, we just started writing letters, and the figure of the House gets visits from us all the time, while the retired ones can go there every day. But I realized that that wasn't enough when it came time to, came time to go back to the Goose Creek, sorry. But it wasn't enough. And when they weren't listening, somebody had to step up and do something, and nobody else could. So, here I am. And I, as it went forward, as I went forward and I decided to run, I knew that I could do a good job for the county. I have a lot of skills that I've acquired in my career, and I really do feel like I could be a good watchdog for our money and make sure that it's being spent wisely.
Thank you all. I'm going to read this word for word. "Well, if we are spending all this money on technology for the schools, why can't we make sure that our tax money is keeping the children warm or cool when it comes to that point of the season?" So, I guess this question is trying to get to some of the other social issues, perhaps, in our community, that we have children with needs. If I'm wrong, somebody stand up and correct me, please.
Well, speaking to that, we do. The demographics of Preble County, we have a lot of low income in Preble County. It's no secret. Schools deal with that, our local governments deal with that. And to try to rectify those things is going to be dealt with with jobs. What are we going to do to help prepare those young people going forward? And you've got many generations that have dealt with a lot of assistance. I think that's a lot of debate now in with the presidential race, talking about Mr. Romney's comments on the 47 percent. You know, how he was, you know, his comments toward that, taking that in context or out of context, you can take either way, but the stark reality of that is, we do have a lot of individuals across the whole country that are on assistance. And whether they want to be in those categories or they don't, you know, nobody wants to be sitting at the bottom of the tier, no matter where you are. And I think with a community that is embraced about how to try to lift each individual up, empowering them, we can help accomplish those things. You cannot legislate morality on any front, but we can stand together as a community to be steadfast with our beliefs of trying to get foundation back in, getting our children, inviting them into our churches, getting them in there, getting them involved, and getting them active in the community in other ways. Also encouraging our parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents to be involved in our schools. Come in and volunteer. I know there in one school in Preble County that's going to turn you away. If you come in there and actively want to help pursue and try to help in some way or another, so.
I think it's important for county Commissioners especially, but everybody in the county, to be networked, so they know what programs are available. You know, there's a new program that's come out, I think it's called Jacob's Ladder, that actually sends backpack full of food home on the weekends, because they realize kids are not, they're eating their free lunches at school, and they don't have any food to take over the weekend. So, I think it's incumbent upon elected officials especially, but the public also, to educate themselves about what's available. If people are in foreclosure, you know, you send them to the Hitt Foundation. You know, if kids can't afford to be in preschool, you send them to Head Start. And you need to know where you can send people. One of the things that I've done is I've become a quarter-appointed special advocate. And I did that before I was ever Commissioner. And actually, it was the first one that was appointed, because kids are important, and we need to protect kids in this county. And so, I think we just need to know what's available and how to get it to the people that need it.
Well, I think lower taxes keeps money in your pocket where you can feed your kids. So, if we can keep the cost of doing government, if the cost of government low enough, more people can keep their money, just like businesses, families can keep their money to take care of their children too. And the best fix for poverty is a job. So, if we can get the economy turned around, and we can get, you know, our business, our current businesses, expanding and working and providing jobs, that's the best fix for poverty. And then, I'm with Eric. My church is very active. We're actually a very new church, and they are involved in providing gloves. Their goal is to provide a pair of gloves for every child that came in elementary. And we don't even know what the numbers of that is, but they've started that fundraising and that collection. And that kind of thing's important, and that's a community thing. That's a thing where we have to care about each other and take care of each other, and it's not the government's responsibility. It's our responsibility to take care of each other. And so, we can get involved in our communities and get involved in our churches, and do something outside of what the government can offer, and probably do a much better job at helping the people that need it.
Thank you. On a different topic, what about all these abandoned houses? Isn't there something we taxpayers could do, something productive with them? I guess that's the question. Can we do something productive with these abandoned houses?
I'm a little familiar, because going to the village meetings and the township meetings, there is a program right now from the state that is helping to pay to tear down some of these buildings, which is great, but there's not enough money in it to get rid of all the buildings. One of the things that's a problem when you've got an abandoned building is the state regulation of bringing it up to code. It's very, very expensive to do something like that. So, it'd be nice to use a, say, use a school as a natural school program or some sort of, but very expensive. I know that in one of the townships, twin townships, Rodney and his people were talking about, you know, their cleanup to do. Why can't we, instead of looking to the government, why can't you go and say to your neighbor, hey, you need some help cleaning that up? Because sometimes people get, let things get out of hand, and then it's just so overwhelming they can't even think about, you know, fixing it. Why can't we as neighbors say, do you need some help with that? You know, organize your community a little bit, and can we clean it up for you? I don't know, there's lots of different issues, lots of different ways we can get things done without the government, you know, putting the bill and being in charge, because most of the time, they get involved and it doesn't get much better.
Light homes that are not fit for anybody living, yeah, we need to try to continue to work with different angles to try to help get those done. The grant that the county got, like Denise was looking through, the money is tight, so you don't want to do so much with what funds you have. I think one area we need to look at is, they've got certain taxes they put on. They put a bed tax on, they put a conveyance tax on, helping fund the Convention and Visitors Bureau and what have you. I think we need to look at how we did those taxing and how it affects our real estate market in Preble County. I've been talking with several Realtors in the county, sometimes just a small percentage could be a deal breaker, depending on how things should go. So, that would be one area that I would definitely look and take a strong assessment of, to see if that's hindering any type of recovery here in our own county. You know, we're at, now our hands tied as far as what goes on, the state and federal of it, but in this county, that's one area that we can have that has more of a hindrance or appears to be at this point, that may help drive the real estate market, or help fuel some, get some people back in some of those homes, if we would look at that assessment on the conveyance tax there.
One of the boards that I serve on is Habitat for Humanity Board here in Preble County, and there's a program that we're looking into and actually have contacted one of the big banks that have a lot of the foreclosures. And they will actually donate, if they have one in your county that fits their criteria, donate the land, the building, house in this case, to the Habitat Board, so that we could use that, or if not donate, it's a very small cost, so that we can use that to build a Habitat home. So, there are things available that are not necessarily government things, but, you know, and there have been buildings in this county tore down, and it's been put on their taxes for whoever buys the property the next time. That's not always the best, but if you have something that's a nuisance, because you've got meth labs in it, that may be the best money spent.
Denise, last to leave.
I do appreciate this time. I'm glad that we got to do this. It was very nice setting. I'm glad that we got to talk. It really feels like we had a conversation. I do have to leave, I'm so sorry.
Let's get to this, Eric.
Well, let me say this, we have one more requested question. So, if anybody's thinking they may have one, but they're not sure they want to give it to me, do it. And then we'll get them all out. And this one can, it might be a little repetitive, but I think it gets to the heart of some of the problems with the current Commission, if you assume there are some. Okay, here's the question. "It seems to me that every few years, Preble County becomes embroiled in a large issue, particularly one that involves large sums of money or controversial commitments, that puts the Commissioners and the citizens at odds. What approach to the office would you take to avoid these controversies?" And try not to be too repetitive, because I think you've kind of touched on some of this, but this is obviously, this would include something like Goose Creek. What do we learn from these repeated episodes?
My assessment of it was a public relations failure. Not that the idea and the concept was wrong, they jumped out and did what they did towards the end, that definitely had made it controversial, but the conversation needs to continue to happen with open dialogue with all citizens of Preble County, whether we send out newsletters, whether we're more vocal, and through the letters to the registered Herald, I know they have the Commissioners' Corner, but we need to get some other avenues that we're going to be able to keep people informed, one way or another, so that we don't have these issues that come up. If it's definitely the concern and the will of the people, then we need to be able to orchestrate and articulate to what the needs that most individuals in Preble County are wanting and expect out of our elected officials. So, the open dialogue, I would be more than glad to continue on and work well with whatever goes in office this fall. Successful or unsuccessful, I told Chris that I would work with him. Either way, and I feel the feelings the same with him, he is Administrator of West Alexandria and the Commissioner, so we will be working together one way or another. If unsuccessful, I still have two years left on the Board of Education. So, the open dialogue needs to happen between all elected officials, along with communicating with the public, and that public perception issue, it starts to diminish some with being out in front and talking with the people.
And I've touched on this before, and I don't mean to be repetitive, but it answers the question. We need to serve the people, and I know I keep saying that, but, and it's hard to put into words what you do, but you make yourself available to the people, and they know that they can talk to you, and more importantly, they know you're going to vote for them. And I think if you go back to 2000, to 2001, to the end of 2002, the Commissioners didn't listen to the people, and that's why we had landfill leases. The four years I was Commissioner, there were no significant issues between the county Commissioners and the people, because they knew they could come in there and they would be heard, and not heard from up on that big podium they sit on. They, we come down, I always went down to the table, I think that stopped. And I think there's a lot of those little kind of things that make a big difference with people and how people respond to the Commissioners. And again, it needs to be two-way communication, and we are here to serve people.
Thank you both. I've got another one. "With regard to abandoned and/or run-down properties, some larger cities end up owning them. They in turn offer them for very low money with commitment to live five to 10 years in them before selling. Your thoughts on that?"
Could we do that? My experience has been that there's been some properties that have had significant taxes owed, and we could have taken them for taxes, but we didn't want the liability of that, because when you own a property, then the county is going to be responsible for bringing it up to code, or getting rid of the asbestos, or getting rid of the tanks, the gas, or, you know, if somebody walks on there and gets hurt and that kind of thing. So, I think that's a double-edged sword about owning it. I think in Michigan, there's a land bank that I heard about several years ago, that they, it's not necessarily government, that they get control of the property... they, it's not necessarily government, that they get control of the property and then if they have to tear the house down or whatever, then they usually give it to the neighbor because the neighbor will take care of it. So I think there's other things that we could do to look at to see what can we do, but I think government's owning properties, I'm not sure that's the best way to get it done.
Ultimately, we'll end up with a lot more costs than we can incur. We're having trouble with services coming up here in '14 with all the local government funds falling off. So with all that in the mindset, I would be very hesitant on what properties that we're able to obtain and afford and sustain ourselves. I would look forward to working with our current state representatives in office to see what type of solutions they can help offer to us to help rectify some of those issues in our own county. But it's not just here, it's all over the country for that fact.
All right. Any other questions from anyone in the crowd?
Yes, my name is Jim Owens.
Come on up here so you can use my camera. And where are you from?
Tennessee. What do you think? Hi, my name is Jim Owens and we just opened a new business next door here and I'm trying to figure out what should I do to vote for either one of you people? I have no idea who you are, I don't know what you're doing for the business, we are new to the town and you know, tell me why I should vote for you.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'm Eric Gertin and you see my sign here in front of you. I've been on the school board, our backgrounds, each one of us, including Mr. Day, we've all got different backgrounds that have allowed us to either run for this or felt that we're qualified to take on the dog's county commissioner. I think that current actions between myself and Mr. Day, he is the sitting president, the county commissioner, also the administrator of West Alexandria. Now, the question is, is that a conflict of interest? That's a question for him to decide, but there are some issues that he had voted on local government funds going to West Alexandria. That is unethical if you ask me. How the state of Ohio views those things, that's a good question for our county prosecutor and any other attorney that looks at those things. I am very much out front on my views on things. I don't think I should have to tell you one thing and tell somebody else something else what you get is what you see here. When it comes to business in Purple County, I think we have an unfair advantage as how we're marketing, helping some existing business and other businesses, we're letting fall off through how our economic development office is being handled right now. I think fairness across the board. All of our tax dollars are funded in this office, it should be fair for every one of us. I'm a small business owner, I don't have my hands stuck out to obtain help.
Okay, well, we've been here for about a year now and neither one of the candidates or anybody from the commissioners have come by and seen us and talked to us, welcomed us to the county for a new business or anything. Explain that.
Well, I'd be more than glad to come over and visit with you. I've been out, I'm one guy, I'm the biggest fault for doing my whole campaign. I don't have a lot of volunteers because things are tight right now getting people to go out for gasoline, but I will make a point to stop over and visit with you. I understand how your business is working, what it takes for you to operate and what's helping or hindering you right now in Purple County. I've been doing that with a lot of other businesses and I'm doing my very best, trying to get as many of them as I can.
Okay, Jane, go ahead.
Would you first explain Eric and Chris are competing for one seat?
Yes.
That Chris currently holds.
I know that.
Okay, and then Jane and Denise are running for the vacant seat that Bob Stone Cash did hold, but won't be.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I'm Jane Marshall and I think the easiest way to learn about me is to call and talk to me. And if you'll go back and Thomas will raise his hand, there's flyers back there that has all my contact information. So you call me and we'll talk as long as you want and learn, and you can ask me whatever questions you want. You can look at my website, you can learn all kinds of things and you can read my flyer because that has what other people think of me. Because I can sit up here and I can sing you a song, well, maybe I can sing pretty, I don't know, but I can sing you a song about whatever you want to hear about. But it's what other people think about me, in my opinion, is what makes the biggest difference because they know me and they're not singing a song, they're telling why they are going to support me and go to vote for me. So that answers that question and I hope. And what's the next question?
Okay, but I don't know you, but I don't know you, so how come you don't come by?
And you're right.
And visit people.
And I apologize. I've been by your place several times and I see sewing and I see upholstery and I see all these fun things that I would like, that I do and you know, I make a lot of my own clothes. So that's very interesting to me, it's just, and I apologize for not having gotten in there.
Can I ask you something?
Yes, sir.
None of the commissioners have been there. Has the, you've been here one year, has the ED director ever been in your job?
Economic Development.
Economic Development.
Yes.
He has.
That has.
Okay.
And, oh gosh, who am I trying to think of? Chamber of Commerce, they have been by. But anybody running for election is, you know, we still have a vote and I'm new in this town, so I have no idea which way to go on any party. No disrespect, just trying to figure out. And come by and say it, you know, we talk, talk your politics.
I appreciate you taking the time to come here to get them formed. And what is your business hours?
Eight to five, Monday through Friday, charities.
That's probably one reason why I've missed you, this time I've been out, time I get off work and where I start and end, I did come down all through the main drag and did hit on a lot of businesses that were open, there were a lot that was already closed when I came back. So I will make a point to catch you before you leave.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
He did decide, find out he had good neighbors at least.
Hey, Mary, for that, I had to do it, man. Thank you.
They do great work. Okay, anyone else with any questions at all? All right, then we have a closing question. Hold on. And that question, if you could answer it in two minutes or less, why do you believe you are the better candidate as opposed obviously to the person you're running against and neither of whom are now currently here? So it's a little unfair, but let's try it anyway.
Okay. I'm the better candidate, in my opinion, because I have experienced, not just as county commissioner, but in the county in a whole big bunch of different kinds of boards and all kinds of different experiences. For instance, earlier we heard that the commissioners are in charge of splitting the local government funds. That's not accurate. They have a say in it, they actually I think have a veto in it, but they're not in charge of it. Because it's voted on by the townships and the villages. It's that kind of thing that separates me from my challenger or my opponent, I guess I should say. So I think that's where it comes down to, is do you want somebody with experience in the county and in various boards and commissions and as a former county commissioner, or do you want somebody that's had some experience in industry and only that and no, by our own admission, no boards? So that's why I'm a better candidate. I think the other piece of that is, you know, that I work well with people, I meet well with people and I'm available to people.
Well, I would say for myself that customer service will be key in how I differentiate myself from Mr. Day. He claims to be conservative, I believe I'm a lot more conservative than Mr. Day is. Our stark difference between him and I both, a lot of things we agree on, but the biggest difference is how they've spent on projects for economic development. We don't believe in selling the farm to help, you know, and ultimately in the end of the day burden the taxpayer. We feel that trying to help develop and pump up and support private enterprise will be a much larger and better scheme to move Purple County forward when it comes to economic development. Integrity. When you start wasting that type of tax money, it does bring integrity into the question. And like you said, they have got us a surplus at this point, but to what cost? To all of our departments did we lose services from by getting that surplus? And then how to sustain where we're at? Because with local government funds falling off, we spent on one hand ultimately the same dollar figure that we're going to be losing here very shortly. So it's all a matter of can we afford four years of where we're at or are we going to look in a different direction and see someone that's going to be open-minded and working as a voice for the people? And I think that's where the stark difference comes in between my opponent and myself.
Well, first of all, thank you very much to all of you and thank you very much Jane for moderating. Let's give Jane a hand. Thank you, Sharon. I want to see the candidates who made themselves available and spoke with great diversity and hope you all make it so to speak, you know? It's very interesting. And I tell you what, you guys were phenomenal. If you compare that to other forums, it was really great questions and I think the candidates gave us a great insight. I want to thank especially the Chamber of Commerce, who's not affiliated with the video, of which I am not sorry about either. Thank you, Gold. If you haven't seen it, please go ahead, it's a video, make sure the press that it's all there, the link, because it's really a funny video, so but it's not associated with the Chamber of Commerce.
I told him I'd take it down, just.
Why?
He was upset about it.
Who?
Sean.
Oh, Sean, really?
Oh, Sean, he was in there.
Well, okay, well, you do whatever you want. I really want to thank you from the bottom.
I'll change the opening slide.
I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, coming out here, that's what it takes all in for the same thing. And that's for the betterment of this county, that we have a better way of life, that we change in a productive, progressive way. And I'm so thankful that there are candidates out there, no matter what direction they bring us in, that they're willing to serve us. And what we should always remember is to keep on toes though, that they are servants of ours, that in fact, we pay them, that there's a constant transparency, transparency in their political life and most of all, that we take up the responsibility of being good citizens and be active in the political process. With that, all of you.
Say, you're not ready.
We're not. Well, not, no, no, no. Thank you so very much and have a great evening.